I called to order the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. At this time, I please ask that you silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions. Moving on on the agenda, item one, roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder to the council members, just to speak clearly and get the microphone a little bit closer so people online and people in the back of the room can hear. So I appreciate that. Moving on to the item number three is the mayor's report, a few meetings and activities since our last meeting. I did attend, was asked to attend to the NORDAC Race Club Board of Directors meeting, met with the group from Giving Hearts Day. We had a discussion on childcare legislative meetings and updates along with legislative forums, had a Task Force 21 meeting, Workforce Development Council meeting, Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, along with Chamber Military Affairs where we learned of the economic impact of the Minnetonka Air Force Base. Fifth Bomb Wing Fourth Quarter Awards, along with the 91st Missile Wing Annual Awards happened since our last meeting. And then lunch with Senator Hoven, General Jim Slife, and General Andrew Gabara all happened here. And I also want to take this opportunity before I get to a proclamation to give a shout out to all of our first responders, police, fire, and our Public Works team. Just doing a, just a wonderful job. Brian, you and your team with that water main break that happened. Kudos to them and, and give them a pat on the back for what they're doing. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason. Well, hey, everybody, okay? Just let's just give a big group hug on that one. But really, to all of our first responders, excellent, excellent, excellent work. If there are no questions. Moving on to a proclamation, the City of Minnetonka Mayor proclaims February 16th to the 22nd as Engineers Week, whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time from rebuilding cities devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, sustainable, and cost-effective infrastructure is designed and constructed to meet the needs of society. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge. And whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Now, therefore do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of the City of Minnetonka, hereby proclaim February 16th to the 22nd, 2025, as Engineers Week in Minnetonka in recognition of the important past work and future contributions provided by engineers within our community and their vital role in creating safe, reliable infrastructure for the City of Minnetonka and its residents. Signed by Mayor Tom Ross and Michaela McWilliams. So thank you Lance and your team, and we'll get this to you. That concludes my report. If there are any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, and that's the City Manager's Report. Harold.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I open up for any questions with regards to the memo that's included in the packet, I do want to note that typically here on the second meeting of the month, we would have a finance update. Mr. Lakefield is in Bismarck testifying late this afternoon on a bill, will not be here this evening. So we will not have a finance report this evening. But trust me, we'll catch you up with a lot of finance stuff as we get into budget process again. So ample opportunity for that in the future. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to the City Manager memo that's provided.
Mike and Rob.
I just wanted to start with, with one, Harold. One of the things I noted in the Public Works with, with the operations side of things, there's, I'm sorry, now am I seeing it here or did I read it somewhere else? Anyway, what I'm coming back to is the bus thing again. So in the 24 budget, there's a bus, and as I've said repeatedly, I'm not, I'm not a fan of going back to prior council decisions. That's not my point at all. But I do know with what we took on in the last meeting that we're going to be doing a pretty comprehensive study. The funding mechanisms are changing a lot. We're going to have to take a look at transit top to bottom. Is there any thought from, from your team about delaying this purchase? Or a lot of times I know this is a long process too. So it's not just, hey, let's go buy one. It's, it takes months and months to get everything put together. So I just wanted your thoughts on that.
I'll defer to staff, but my understanding is there's a pretty lengthy federal process. And once that, as money has been allocated by the federal government, there's some expectation that we follow through with that. So unless there's direction from the federal side on putting a stay on that, we're kind of expected to continue forward, but I'll let Brian answer that question.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam. To get after your point or question as far as the bus, yes, we are taking a look at the ridership data to see if it actually justifies purchasing the bus at this time. That is the intent of Phase Two for our transit plan that we will be rolling out here next council meeting once we go ahead and finalize the ridership data analysis.
If I can continue, Mr. Mayor. So Brian, does that, are you saying then that as part of that process that aligns with this timeline as well for the purchase itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so perfect. Sounds great.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Rob?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Harold, I was just wondering, in reading the report, there doesn't, any mention of the Police Department or some of the things that are going on there? I was wondering if you or Chief Plessis could speak to some of the things that have been happening in the last couple of weeks since we put him in as the interim chief?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Captain Plessis come up and speak, but we've been moving forward as directed by, by council. We had a all-call meeting last week that Captain Plessis implemented. Myself and Assistant City Manager Joyce were there to show support of the leadership moving forward. We've been discussing multiple things with regards to retention and potential policy changes and all those kinds of things. Most of those I have given the go-ahead to Captain Plessis to proceed with. We haven't come across too much yet that I feel needs to wait until a new police chief is selected. And then obviously later on in the agenda is the matter with regards to the police chief recruitment. So, but I'll let Captain Plessis fill in his perspective as well.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller. As City Manager Stewart suggested, we, we had an all-call meeting where we called the entire department together. We had a really good team show up to that. I mean, probably the majority of the Police Department showed up. And we went over some of the, the steps and plans that we intend to move forward with. One of those, and, and probably the, the major portion of that, that, that we had a conversation on were the working groups. And the point to the working groups is to, to have a procedure for moving forward that isn't going to be a top-down procedure, it's going to be a department as a whole procedure. Get insight and, and assistance from, from our staff and making decisions on how to move forward. As part of that, we use the model of a working group. So we already have a recruitment and retention working group that we're working with. And there's some exciting things that are going to come out of that group to the City Council in the near future. We worked with that same process and we developed four working groups. The first one is a policy evaluation working group where the Police Department is consistently developing new policies, changing policies, getting recommendations from our, our policy company, Lexipol. And part of that process is to evaluate those policies to make sure we get a, a policy that fits our department and fits our people. So we established a working group that will take members of the Police Department from all levels, from officers, sergeants, and lieutenants, to build recommendations to the command team. Part of that working group is also going to include an HR representative, somebody from the city who can ensure that we're staying in the right track as far as legal obligations and, and so forth. So the next one is a budget working group. We've, every police chief I've worked for in the past has had a hard time getting officers involved in the budget process. I mean, you try to, to include them. This is a way to ensure that they're included. So the, the, the budget working group is going to be designed to evaluate all budget requests and prioritize them. And as is always the case, the wishes are always more than the, than the pocketbook will allow. So it'll be their job to review and, and, and help make decisions on what needs to be cut and what's important to them. Gives them some involvement in what happens in the future direction of the department. The third working group is the investigation and CPSM recommendations. As you know, the investigation had several investigative recommendations. CPSM had about somewhere in the realm of 80 recommendations. So we need to go through those, prioritize those, and develop ways to, to move forward with, with implementing some of the recommendations and changes. A lot of them need to be done now. It shouldn't be something that waits till later. So that's the, that's the intention behind that is getting a group together and getting a process started. Some of, quite a few of them have already been put into place. But this is also an ability for them to, to look it over, see if this is the direction that we want to go with, whether they're appropriately fulfilled or if there's a recommendation for other things to the department leadership. The last one is a, is a temporary space usage. As you know, City Hall moved out almost two years ago, and we haven't utilized the space to any great extent upstairs. So we're clearly hurting for space and we want to make recommendations that make sense. We've, we've looked at different things and different options, and it's just a matter of, of having a group take a close look. We've asked for a firefighter to be our fire, fire department to be part of this group, and also the engineers to be part of this group to look at what we can and can't do. The whole point to the, the space usage is to, for a temporary solution while the City Council makes determinations of which direction we're going to go for the future of the department. It's not something where we intend to make expensive changes knowing that there's going to be a renovation to the Police Department. But there are some common sense things that we can do that won't cost the city much, that we can utilize that space during that time. And up to this point, we've taken cursory looks, but we haven't taken a close look, a really close examination. For example, can we move evidence to a different location and utilize that spot maybe as a workout or a gym, gym area for officers? We have, we have quite a bit of equipment, but we have a very small room. And I think there are, for wellness purposes, we could add a lot to that space and a lot of equipment to that space and benefit the officers. And so that's something we want to look at in, in terms of are we using our space properly? So that in a nutshell is what we're, what we're started with. Any questions?
Thank you. I appreciate that, Chief and Harold. I thank you guys.
Thanks, Neil. Any other questions on the City Manager's Report? Paul?
Just another vacant position. We have HR position, the Director. Is that, what's the status of that position being posted or filled? I haven't been able to find it on the website.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, council approved the recruitment contract for that at the last city council meeting. That job has been posted. It is available to apply through the recruiter's website and has been posted on several other job boards like Indeed and some of those kinds of things. So that is out, active and available for application.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we will move on to item five on the agenda. That is the Planning Commission. Item 5.2, public hearing, case number 2025-01, the Air Hills addition, future land use map amendment, zoning map amendment, and preliminary plat. Now is the time for those who wish to speak in favor of or against. Item 5.2. Second call. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close a public hearing and move on.
And accept the recommendation?
Yeah, accept the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Rob?
Thank you. Doug, I, I just wanted to talk to you real quick because you and I had met last week, and I just want to make sure that I understood everything and I explained it to the residents around the property that have homes out there. So in 10 years, when the conditional use permit is set to expire, at that point, the errors and having changed the property to light industrial from residential, there will be reclamation that they have to do to fix that property and bring it back as close to normal as possible for the homeowners that butt up next to them. Is that correct?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller, that is correct. It's, it's an interim use permit, not a conditional use permit, which split and hairs, but it has an end date to it. That is 10 years from now, and we did tie that to the, the expected completion of flood controls. So one of the conditions that was approved by the Planning Commission in the interim use permit was a requirement for reclamation of the property. So bring it back to a grass hill with some trees on it or to submit a development plan. So they could go either direction. It will be zoned industrial at the time. Should they submit a development plan for an industrial site to the adjacent residents, would be afforded all the protections of the LDO, buffer yards, screening requirements, all of the other things that residential properties adjacent to commercial and industrial development are protected by through the LDO. So in 10 years, they could also apply for an extension to the interim use permit in 10 years. If say there is something going on and they have a legitimate reason to continue the activity, they could ask the Planning Commission to extend that interim use permit. And additional conditions would be applied by the Planning Commission at that time. It is an interim use, use, so it has to be given an end date on the permit. That is required by the LDO.
Any other questions? Mike?
Doug, this is, this is a unique property. And, and you know, so as I watched the Planning Commission talk through this, you know, for me, right behind the Harvest State's properties, like that feels industrial, right? But if you go all the way up the hill, both up west and south, eventually you get to residential properties. And so is, is there, is there sort of a unique? I think everything that's laid out makes sense to me, that it's, it's leaving as many protections in place as we can to make sure that the eventual build-out, whatever it is, meets all the requirements that we normally have. But is, is this sort of a unique case because of how this is laid out and the size of that property? Because I could see some of it becoming residential, but the very bottom does feel industrial.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, yes, this, this would not be something that I would recommend we would put into a comprehensive plan for a future land use proposal. We don't generally recommend that we put industrial adjacent to residential at all. I like a commercial buffer. That's just my opinion and my recommendation when it comes to things like that. This was brought in from the county. It was zoned residential by the county. This use was allowed to happen while it was under the county's jurisdiction. And then we brought it into the ETJ, and then it became kind of our legal non-conforming problem at that time. It definitely could go either way. Had the subdivision at the top of the hill incorporated at the time they had subdivided, it could have become residential. It wasn't included. No access was brought to it from the top of the hill. So it kind of fell the other way towards the industrial side. At this point, with the use that's been ongoing, I would say that it's industrial use. And so they had a good enough case for me to recommend a zone change and bring it into the industrial uses.
And if I can continue, and, and so, you know, kind of back to what Alderman Fuller was getting at, this, this method, this path that you've laid out for us, leaves us with the most protections for the residential areas that are just to the west long-term.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, yes. Right now, it is illegal, non-conforming use. They can continue as they are as long as that there's no lapse in the use and all of these other rules that are really difficult for us to gather any evidence and proof. Bringing it this way, we're bringing them into, they're, we're giving the land the entitlements for the use. At that point, then we can regulate that use with all of the requirements of our land development ordinance.
And then just one last one, Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned that the, the thought process with the timing was aligned to flood control. But is it, is it actually legally bound to flood control or is it 10 years? Or so what is it, is it a definite date or is it tied to that? Because we know things can slip is really my point.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, it's, it's, our logical nexus for choosing the date was tying it to the expected completion of flood control. However, it's an exact date. It's January 1st, 2036, that the interim use permit will expire whether flood controls are completed or not.
And then, Mr. Mayor, just, just one last comment, just to make sure that I've got it right. One of the other big facets of this whole thing and the whole reason it's, it's likely in front of us is because we're trying to mitigate a water issue that the, the, I think it's the County Water Board, is that the right way to look at it, is, is willing to take on and hopefully fix. And that, that's an important facet of this whole thing in the first place.
Yes. Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, this all was brought about by a proposed plat that was brought to us by the Ward County Water Resource Board. There is a great deal of an erosion. You guys have heard about it from residents and in this application happening on this property, and it's actually creating sediment problems in the Suruss River itself. And so the Ward County Water Resource Board is looking to do a storm water mitigation project on the property. They need to subdivide and own the property on which they're going to do that infrastructure project. So they're looking, the, what really brought this about was that plat. They need to take that section off and they're going to put a project on it. And so, but in order for us to bring you a plat, the rest of the property needs to be in compliance. We, our LDO doesn't allow us to bring you plats on non-compliant properties.
Any other questions for Doug? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.3, public hearing, case number 2025-02, the LDO text amendment. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the text amendment. Second call. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
I would move that we close a public hearing and accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.4, the LDO text amendment, daycare cleanup. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item six on the agenda, consent item. We have 15 items on our consent agenda currently. We've been asked to pull item 6.10. Are there any others that need to be pulled? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on the remaining items.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to the one item that was asked to be pulled, item 6.10. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Discussion, I know, Mike, you were the one that asked to have this pulled. So I'll turn it over.
So just, and Chief Kelly's here, great. I didn't see you before, but I'm glad you're here. And really, maybe just as much for the city manager. My main question on this one is, is we've got the police department using this today. Is that correct? And so just a few things along those lines. Number one, does this become sort of a master agreement for the city then? Is that where we're headed here? And then, you know, are there some discounts that apply? And then the other thing I kind of wanted to hear from you guys was just what is the police department's feedback been? Because hopefully this is something that's going to be great for us as we work with staff.
Mayor Alderman, bless him. No, this is not a master agreement. We actually have to have a separate agreement from the police department. It is individualized. If you look at the app, it is customized to fire. It has the peer support personnel that are on the team on that app, so they could directly contact them. It has stuff just focused on fire-related, you know, trauma and all that kind of stuff. The police department just rolled theirs out about a month ago, and they've had good feedback. I just asked them on it. I don't have a lot of data on it yet because they just rolled it out. But they said they've had a lot of contacts, you know, people going in and utilizing the app, going through some of the training that's on there. But again, it's very specialized. Because I did ask that question, if we could just hop on theirs to get a discount. The police department app is using stuff for PD as well as dispatch. So we're leaving dispatch under their app right now. And then this one will be just specialized in fire.
Any other questions, Paul? Rob, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Chief, just so, they basically customize the app for each individual department? Is that kind of what I'm understanding?
Yep, our peer support, I'm sorry, Mayor Alderman Fuller. We have our own peer support team, and the police department has their own peer support team. There might be clinicians when they get done vetting all the clinicians that would rather work with fire or would rather work with police or we feel would be better suited for them, as well as the trainings are very custom to the different disciplines.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item seven, Action Items. 7.1, Minefield, Superfund Site Operation and Maintenance Manual Approval. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, discussion?
Mr. Mayor? So yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit from this. I did hear from Park Board representatives. It's just, it's sort of a pass-through where we have to be on the agreement. Is that the right way to think of that? But if there's something Jason can add to that, that'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless him. So this is our property and it will always be our property. So we're basically, with the park wanting to use it, there are things that, for the reuse to occur, that will have to be monitored over time. So it'll be the park's responsibility to monitor for those things and do the maintenance and upkeep on their portions. And then we continue to do, you know, we continue to be the overall responsible party for the entire site is how this will work going forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Soren's thinking. So this has been a project in the works for a long time. So this may have fallen out of memory for some of our citizens, and we have some new council members here that probably weren't part of this project from the very beginning. So can you just provide a brief overview of what the project entails and what we're trying to accomplish? And what's taken so long to get to this point?
Absolutely. So yeah, to go back, basically, we went through a five-year review process in 2016, and the EPA kind of let us know that the site has pretty much met all of its obligations from the remedial action standpoint, from things that were put in place. So there was a potential to redevelop it. So at that time, we started having some communications with the park district. Can they express an interest? So they've submitted some rough plans to install a frisbee golf course, mountain bike trails, and some cross-country running trails. So it took us a while to get the EPA engaged. Then once they were engaged, they weren't very engaged. We would have communications, and then communications would kind of break off for three to six months. So we had a remedial project manager that was kind of working in multiple roles, and she didn't have enough time to dedicate to our project. So starting about, Steph, maybe you can fill it. When did Becky start working with? Was that about beginning of next, last year, probably?
I think so. I think we both were, I think I started attending those calls about the same time that Becky came online in those calls, too.
Yeah, so now we actually have a remedial project manager that's been dedicated to our process and our project. So we've been spending about the last year working through this O and M plan and deciding, you know, what they're comfortable with for allowing access to the site. That's, you know, the remedial action from back in the 90s was basically put a clay cap over it. There's some error in vents, and then fence it off and make sure that nobody can go on it. So in order to make it into like a park feature, now you're encouraging, you know, public activities. So we need to make sure that, you know, the gas vents are monitored and tested so we're not putting people in contact with potentially hazardous gases. And then make sure we're not impacting the cap to, you know, allow lichate to come out of the landfill or moisture to get into the landfill. So that's this process. We have an O and M that kind of establishes all those things that we're going to monitor. And then this O and M will go in a package to, with a consent decree to go back through a federal court system and basically modify the consent decree from 1996 or 97, something to that effect.
If I can continue. So Jason, you mentioned, the way you put it was, it'll sort of never come out of the city. Is that the right way to think of that? This type of site under federal law essentially can never be sold? Is that the right way to look at it?
Mayor Ross Alderman, bless him. It can, I just, I don't know of any entity that would ever want to take on the liability of taking the responsibility off of our hands. So it theoretically could if they want to take all the liability and the responsibility of it, but I just don't see it happening.
And so then just one last thing. Would it, is it safe to say that the federal government and the EPA that are involved on that side are overly cautious in terms of letting people back into this site? That it is fully safe? Everything the park wants to do is actually a good legitimate use of this space?
Mayor Ross Alderman, bless him. That, from my standpoint, that was probably one of my frustrations is, like, we go down there and we walk on it. We're near the gas vents, we monitor it. We don't smell gases. There, you know, we do lichate testing and stuff like we're supposed to. So to us, it just looks like a grass field. But to the EPA, yes, they take stuff much more seriously probably than we do. So there's going to have to be air monitoring that's done and some of these things to make sure we're checking boxes and we're not putting health, or human health and safety at risk.
Any other questions for Jason? Seeing none, thank you, Jason. Continuing on, any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 7.2, Second Reading of Chapter 23, Noise Ordinance. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to start with option two for discussion, and then I've got some amendments that I want to do there as well.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, discussion?
Okay, so the reason I wanted to start with option two is that it has two components in it, and I apologize. Now I got to get back in there and make sure I'm in the right spot. So one moment. Maybe I didn't even leave it up. Okay, so the first thought, one of the reasons I liked option two is I don't see a reason for us, and the city attorney, please fill in if I get off track here. I don't see a good reason for us to move away from what I believe the other cities in the state are sticking with their noise ordinances, which is at the 55 level during the day and then down to 50 overnight. Is that the right way to look at that? In the residential areas is what I'm talking about.
And so I'm going to defer to our Assistant City Attorney, Corbin Dickerson, on this question. He's worked with both parties on both of the options on this ordinance, and he's kind of done some more research on why the decibel levels were written as they were, both in option one and in option two. Attorney Dickerson, my understanding is the decibel limits that you were deferring to kind of take into consideration some of the FAA limits, right, for aircraft?
Mayor Ross Alderman, bless him. So what we did when we drafted this, we looked at kind of the national average. So the national, according to, first off, we'll go at the EPA. The daytime national average from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is anywhere from 50 to 65 decibels. What we have to look at is a lot of those are on a 24-hour night-day average, meaning that at night, it could be well below that, so it brings that average down. Another thing, for the nighttime, the average is 40 to 55 decibels. So when we're looking at that, in our current ordinance as written, we have 55 during the day. They're recommending up to 55 at night. And they define, they're saying that limits are often reduced to 45 or 55 at night to account for increased sensitivity during typical sleeping hours. So that 55 is enough for sensitivity during typical sleeping hours. They say 45 to 55 is usually like a hospital or a school setting. So that seems pretty quiet to have out in residential streets during the day. Additionally, when we're looking at these levels, we talked to other staff members. I talked to Ms. Jennifer Ekman, the airport director. And according to the FAA, they study noise a lot with aircraft in and around airports. They recommend a 65-decibel day-night average. So we kind of split that and went at 60 during the day and a 55 at night for those reasons. We thought it was reasonable. Another thing with our ordinances, a lot of those are dispositive, other ordinances in and of theirself. So if you get one decibel over, it could be a violation. Sometimes they measure those as 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 24-hour average. Ours was written with a reasonableness standard. So just because your, we just say a generator is over 55 decibels doesn't mean it's a violation. It's a factor. So we run it through the whole reasonableness of the ordinance to determine whether or not it's in violation.
Okay, all right, thanks. That was my main part for that one. So if we want to, if there's any other discussion on that, we can.
Any further questions of Corbin?
I guess I didn't understand. So I get where you got the averages from, but I think what Alderman Blessam was asking in his question was the levels, the 55 to 80 and the 50 to 75, depending on the time of day, those are what the other cities in North Dakota are set, have set their decibel levels at? Is that accurate?
Mayor Ross Alderman Fuller. So the current ordinance as we have it, the 55 and the morning 50 at night is kind of the average for other cities in North Dakota.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if we could continue. Corbin might want to just stick around just because there might be other parts of the discussion. So now the next thing that I'd like to do then is, item, or in the, let me get to the right section again. In the exemption list, that's in option one, letter E. What I'm interested in there is, the first sentence says, "The operation and testing of standard residential equipment in proper working order." Actually, I like that sentence, and I would like to pull that into, what I, I'm getting these right. I think I started with option two. Pull that in because I like that part. But what I don't like is I don't think we need the examples. If you've got regular residential equipment, which in my mind is a lot of stuff, like we say here, lawn equipment, snow blowers, compressors, generators, weed blowers, weed whackers, you know, there's lots of stuff. And I think trying to have a list isn't probably the right way to write an ordinance, is my thought. But I do like that first sentence that says, "The operation and testing of standard equipment that's in proper working order." I think to me, that makes sense.
So is that, that's an amendment?
Yes, so the amendment that I would like to bring, the first sentence from item E into what I believe is option two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be, you know, we could put it in there as between D and E probably. It looks like that's where it fits in this. So I'm taking that, this is one, and I'm pulling that into two. That, Michaela, did you get it?
Under the exemption?
It is, yep. So item E under, it's three E is what I'm looking for out of option one to pull it into option two.
Yep, yep, so we have an amendment.
I don't want the examples. Just the first sentence.
I just said first sentence.
Perfect, okay.
We have an amendment, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Scott, we have an amendment, Mike's amendment, Scott's second. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
I guess.
Rob?
Public Information Officer, I'm plugged into Dia 7, as always. If you want to share my screen, to provide a visual of the amended language, that'll be added to the exceptions.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, so for the city attorney, what I want there is the first sentence of that, not the example part, exactly.
Yep, correct. Do you have anything to add, Rob?
Well, I was just going to, following along on Mike's thought process there, taking the examples out or creating a list. I mean, Corbin, are there any other cities in the state where they have lists of approved equipment? Because what I'm concerned about, or what I'm thinking about is, you know, a lawnmower, for gosh sakes. You know, they run at 85 to 100 decibels, which is over our limit. And, you know, if somebody wants to complain about it, they can complain, come to the city, and then we have to start cutting out all these different things that people can use. Whereas Alderman Blessam's point, if we just say "the operation of testing of standard equipment," I think that kind of solves it.
Mayor Ross Alderman Fuller, to answer your question. So some of the other cities do have exceptions, but they're for like snow removal equipment, which we have in sub-I of that section. The reason for kind of the exception here was to say that you can use lawn equipment, like a lawnmower or even like a generator. And we wrote "to include but not limited to," so we had, you know, that. It's not an exception, it's a, how did we write it? I just lost it. So it's an exemption, so you're exempted from the specific decibel levels and reasonableness because that's something we commonly use, like a generator, like someone may be using that on a food truck or an air compressor for a construction business or something like that. We want to specifically be able to put that in. However, eliminating that section doesn't mean that it'll run afoul of the reasonableness test either.
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue, and Corbin, just to kind of validate my thinking here, maybe. So above that, we have the unnecessary noise generally section, which is where we get into things like, what is the volume of the noise? The intensity of the noise? Is it unusual, natural? You know, how close is it to residential sleeping facilities? So all of those pieces are sort of part of the, is this a reasonable noise for a residential area, right? Does it sort of fit with what's going on? As an example, as we were going through this, my wife and I were talking about it. She was talking about our, we have a central vac. If our garage door is open, that central vac howls. It's loud, right? So again, rather than trying to chase all of these individual things to make sure that, you know, and I realize it says "not limited to," but I think that's, as you get into these kind of local things, that's where the stuff goes right away. So for me, it's just, are these normal residential items that are being used? And we use the unnecessary noise generally area to determine, does this fit, right? I think that's where my mind goes with this. And I, you know, I think that's the best way to get to a reasonable ordinance that's workable. Because again, you know, we all got the information. We got a ton of information on this one. I think Mark Ganser mentioned he maybe got as much on this as he did on pit bulls, which is interesting. Um, but the idea here is that we need to write an ordinance that works across the city. Um, and so while we've got a specific situation going on now, we, we don't write laws for that. We write laws that are for the general population and the general things that are gonna come up. And I, you know, kinda deferring to you, do you feel that, that with what I'm adjusting here, we, we're still there? Cause I know you put together options that you felt were there, but are, do we stay there with what I'm bringing forward?
I feel that we, we still are. We still are, cause it's, still have to run through the reasonableness test, so, some of those things like, you know, ideally a, an air compressor during the middle of the day is not gonna probably run afoul, um, even in the generator, if you will, so I think we're still there. Um, it's not exempted, but I still think there's an argument for that those can be used.
Okay. Any further, Steph?
Um, so for just purposes of the good of the order, um, I assured the Simonses that I would make sure that a paper copy of her testimony was submitted to all of the council members, so I just wanna, for the purposes of the record, I just wanna confirm that everybody received a copy of this email, and it was provided to you ahead of time, and it's been attached to this, this meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have an amendment on the floor in a second. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion to amend passed unanimously.
Moving back to the original motion now amended, any further discussion? Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item seven point three on the agenda, the police chief recruitment services, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott? Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to, uh, item seven point four, that's our discussion of legislative issues. Any legislative issues that need to be brought forward, council? Mike?
I'm, I'm just gonna mention one, and, and Harold certainly, certainly fill in here. This is the, this is the bill that, that you and I have worked on, um, which is Senate Bill twenty-three fifty, which is related to, uh, public employees' employment records. And I, number one, for the public, I just wanted to set the record straight a little bit, because there's always a lot of chatter, and there's always a lot of, of things that come up around this kinda stuff. Um, you know, I think I've been very clear for those that have been, that have been following the council's actions since I was elected last summer, that a big part of how I think that we move forward with strength and, and with, with treating our, our staff great, is by moving to a merit-based pay system. And this bill is, is, I would say probably seventy-five percent in response to that idea, and it's something that we're working with, um, Senator Bob Paulson from District Three in the Minot area to bring forward, along with other, uh, bill sponsors from the Minot area. Um, one of the issues that I have is that the, the, you know, whether it's press coverage or, or others have jumped into this fight, saying that the city of Minot, or leadership is somehow trying to hide something, and that it's related to the police department investigation and other things that are going on. And I think, I think, number one, I think it's a little unfair of city staff that have, that have asked for this, to, to provide the best environment we can for our people, and it's also a little unfair of city leadership, um, uh, against city leadership. Because again, I think we are as, as transparent, uh, well above and beyond what the law requires, um, both in terms of things like personal appearances, which we'll do in a little bit here, um, but also in releasing, um, releasing records directly out of executive sessions at times. Um, I feel like the city has done its obligation and then some when it comes to keeping records open. What we're asking for with this bill is a very, a very narrow sliver, um, in the public records law that would allow us to keep employee records confidential. You know, right now, if you think about it, those that work in the private sector, um, you know, I've, I've worked in business for thirty-plus years, Fortune five-hundred companies. There wasn't a time when I could see my coworkers' job performance. I couldn't pull their reviews from HR and say, hey, I'd really like to look at what the other guy working in my office, how well they're doing. You can't do that anywhere else, but in public, in North Dakota, in public jobs, you absolutely can't. And in order for us to, to get the best possible out of our organization and out of the people, I think that we need to put a narrow restriction in there. And so what we've asked for is we've asked for a three-year restriction on those records, so that they're private, or if an employee leaves the employment of the city, that they would, that they, their records would immediately be public again. Um, there's also two other carve-outs in there. One is for part of an ongoing investigation, then it's covered by the investigation laws, um, so that they would become public, or if they're part of a law enforcement hiring process. Because we got some feedback that, say, a sheriff's office, if they wanted to hire one of our police officers, should be able to see that information. And, and I agree with that, I don't see any issue with that. And so I, I, again, just more for the public than anything else, I just want people to understand exactly what the motivations are behind this, and why I think it's, it's very important that we move forward with this. I, I think most, most people with common sense would see that idea that, yeah, probably shouldn't be able to see my coworkers' job performance. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll see if anybody else has any other comments, but that's, that's mine on that.
Any other comments? Harold?
I think, uh, Alderman-Blessom covered that fairly well. The one thing I will state is even if this amendment is approved, uh, the personnel records of public employees within the state of North Dakota will still be a lot more open than it is in other states. All the other states I've been in, those records are permanently closed. No, no three-year timeframe, no open upon leaving employment or anything like that. And I do believe that this is a step in the right direction, uh, that we can do as the council's directing on, uh, continuing to, um, encourage our employees to be better every year, and reward employees that are doing a good job. And, uh, again, I believe this is a step in the right direction, so.
Thank you. Any further, anything further on this? Any other legislative issues need to be brought forward? Seeing none, we will move on to item eight on the agenda, that's personal appearances. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to address the council. The only request is that, uh, out of respect for others who wish to speak, would you keep your remarks, um, limited to five minutes?
Mayor Ross, members of the council, um, my name is Craig Gerhart, and I'm here today to ask for the city's help in coming up with a solution for, um, a problem that's gone on way too long and, uh, puts people at, uh, physical risk, and especially our youth. Um, I moved into my home twenty-three years ago, and approximately thirteen years ago, um, a neighbor moved in just to the south of me that has mental health disabilities. So for the first four years that we had lived, you know, beside him, there were some different issues. He showed an unusual interest in people's feet and wanting to see them in sandals, and also people with sunglasses. He, he did not, uh, like, like it when people had glasses on. My first time I had some real concern, um, would be back in twenty-fifteen, when my middle daughter was in middle school, and, um, I had the day off from work, it was a weekday. Um, I was in my garage, and I was doing a project out in my garage that I could've used an extra set of hands. So I looked at my phone, I seen that my daughter was out of school. I called her and asked her if she could come out to the garage to help me, and she said, yes, she could. So, I was waiting and waiting, and my daughter never showed up. Pretty soon, my phone rang, and she said, Dad, I was coming out to the garage to help you, but our neighbor, Aaron, is trying to get a young boy inside his home, and he will not let him go. So I dropped everything. I came out of my garage, went to the front of our home, to see my neighbor about a house and a half south of his home, pulling on this young boy's arm, not letting him go, and the kid yelling, Aaron, I don't wanna go into your house. So I yelled at him. I told him, let that boy go, and then I told my daughter, let's call the police right away, because this was, in my mind, unacceptable. At that point in time, he wasn't charged with anything. He was released to his brother on his, uh, own recognizance, and was told his brother would take care of things. So, time went on, um, he didn't like the fact that we, you know, thought this behavior was unacceptable. He started verbally harassing my family, um, also trespassing. So we had brought charges against him for disorderly conduct and also trespassing. Well, it turns out, the state of North Dakota has laws that anybody that is, um, mentally unfit to serve trial is exempt for anything up to a Class B misdemeanor. So our efforts to get this issue corrected through the city courts in Minot was, um, failed because the charges were automatically dismissed. So, fast forwarding to twenty-twenty-three, um, he followed my youngest daughter to school one morning, and she's nine years old, followed her to school, and said that he was going to kill her with lasers, and that the police were coming to take her parents away. I was out of town at the time, which was probably a good thing. I, I was an hour away from Minot, and I got a call from the school counselor about what had happened. I came back to Minot, um, went to the school. My daughter was interviewed with an officer, and she explained what had went on and how he followed her all the way to school, telling her he was going to kill her and that he was gonna shoot her with lasers. I know he doesn't have lasers, but a nine-year-old little girl does not. So he was charged with Class C felony terrorizing. While this charge was pending, he was to have a no-contact order, uh, by the judge, not to have contact with any of our family. He violated that order twice, was arrested one time. Um, the second time, they waited for his, um, evaluation to see if he was mentally fit to serve trial on the Class C terrorizing charge. Uh, the Class C terrorizing charge, I, it, from what I, I've been told, is he was evaluated in Grafton and found that he may not know the difference between right and wrong. Uh, so I believe as Judge Hager or Kressup, one of the two, dismissed the charges and let him go home.
Hang on one second, Mr. Gerhart. Um, and without objection, I'm gonna allow him to go further if there's any objection. Continue.
Okay. So, I, I didn't get any, you know, explanation from the court. I also tried to see if it would be acceptable for me to talk to the judge and explain, you know, what is going on. If, if this gentleman isn't responsible for his own behavior, the behavior and us having to live with it is still unacceptable. He comes out of his home now, he even mentioned to one of my daughters that the courts can't touch me. He comes out of his home now and swears at my wife every time she comes out to go to work, anytime he can catch her. He yells in the streets. His behavior's just become so outrageously unacceptable, um, that it's been, you know, uh, I went to the state legislature also to try to introduce some new, new legislation with Scott Louser, and I was told by the chairman, um, at the legislature that I should pursue an involuntary committal. Well, the involuntary committal, it requires me to have the support of the state's attorney, which I think I could, um, but also that it needed an evaluation, that whoever did the evaluation is to also recommend that he have, um, you know, some sort of a commitment process be done. But I wanted to, to make light that everything that we've tried to protect our children has failed through the court system because he's not responsible for his own behavior. So what I did is I did a little legwork. I, uh, called the Minot Police Department, and I talked to, uh, Sergeant Foley, who's been very helpful to us and a good advocate for this. Um, so I just wanted to shed a little light through a timeline of behavior and how it's increasingly getting worse since this has started. Um, in twenty-sixteen, there was one call to service. It was a man talking about how this gentleman's approached his thirteen-year-old daughter when she walks to school and making inappropriate comments to her, harassing her. The police warned Aaron if it continued, criminal action would be taken. Twenty-seventeen, also one call to service, uh, speaking inappropriate to children. He was advised by the officer on duty to stay away from the children. In twenty-eighteen, there was just one call to service. This is, that I was, have been given. Um, a contractor states he is, uh, working in the area, and he is asking one of his employees to show him his feet, and that he's a pretty boy. It has made him uncomfortable. The, they advised him to stay away. Twenty-nineteen, the caller states the man tried to get her son to come into his house and take off his socks, and that he was very persistent. He was advised to leave kids alone, and not to invite them inside. Twenty-twenty, there was five calls to service. Caller says, neighbor keeps trying to lure children inside his house with candy, then asks them to take off their socks. A warning was given. Twenty-twenty, uh, another one that was part of those five calls, and I'm just, you know, taking notes of the most, um, concerning ones. Um, his own brother's wife, they live a block down the street from us, called saying that her brother-in-law is harassing them, and asked the police to come have him removed. He also gets, you know, violent and, and physical. Uh, also in twenty-twenty, approached a minor saying, take off the, take off your socks, and he was told to stay away from children. Officer states that Aaron's behavior has gotten more aggressive over the years. Twenty-twenty-one, another five calls. Yelling in the street at neighbors, advised criminal complaint. Now, that one was me, he's yelling in the street on a daily basis, almost. I was advised that a criminal complaint would not be taken. That was by, uh, Sergeant Burns at the time, saying that he would not be arrested, and he also had notes in the docket saying not to arrest this man. Why, I don't know. Caller's son walks to Mini Yap, a second call during that time, a caller's son walks to Magic City Campus, and Aaron asks to see his feet. Caller complains. Second caller called, uh, about yelling in the street. There was a, a summons issued for disorderly conduct, which was dismissed in the court because of his mental capacity. In twenty-twenty-two, that number jumps to fifteen calls to service. Caller states Aaron is following a group of kids. By the time the police got there, he was gone. Caller states, man approached his fourteen-year-old son, told him to take off his glasses because he looks better, playing in his pockets, um, with himself. Neighbor being yelled at, harassing him about his tattoos. Harassed my daughter. In twenty-twenty-two, charges were pressed through the city, those were also dismissed because of his mental capacity. In twenty-twenty-three, the calls jumped to twenty-four calls to service about Aaron Bostow. He's stopping pe, children on the sidewalk from school and getting in their way, and, uh, is persistent at trying to get them in his home. Also, one must've been from the school because he was told to leave school property. Nine-twenty-one of twenty-twenty-four, he was called in for yelling at minors. Nine-twenty-eight in twenty-twenty-four, this is when he followed my daughter to school and told her he was going to kill her. Ten-thirteen, she, my daughter was followed a second time by him in the neighborhood. No-contact order was issued, and it was told not to violate that, and he violated that twice. He was trespassed from Rainbow Photo that same year, and, uh, some other businesses as well. A caller that, late in that, that year, on the thirtieth of November, the caller said that her son was asked for his phone number and to use his vehicle, and to take his socks off. In twenty-twenty-four, and mind you, I've only been given nine years of data from the Minot Police Department. In nine years, there were a hundred and sixteen calls to service about this man's behavior. In twenty-twenty-four, there were fifty-nine. He's, this is, gets progressively more aggressive and worse. Um, caller states that he's delivering DoorDash. Caller states that he's delivering DoorDash and the resident threatened him. He'd been trespassed from Domino's Pizza. He'd been trespassed again from Rainbow Photo Lab on the twenty-ninth of April. 5/9, he was, uh, charged with disorderly conduct and asked to leave a residence on Sixth Street Southwest. On the tenth of May, he approached a young male asking him about his feet and if he could wear slides without socks sometimes. On the thirtieth of May, the caller states Aaron was just told children to go to hell. Caller states Aaron told his children to go to hell and said he kept walling, walking down the street yelling at people as he was walking. On the fifth of June, the caller states Aaron was following a young boy. Aaron was told by the caller to leave the boy alone. He did not and continued to follow the boy. This young boy is also on the spectrum in special needs. The boy's father was notified and there was extra patrol requested and he would advise if the behavior continues, a criminal complaint for harassment would be taken. On the twenty-fifth of June, caller states he keeps yelling at children and yelling at her and spit in her face. Then he grabbed his genitals and started walking towards her child. Caller states on the twenty-sixth of June that Aaron is yelling profanities at him. On the twenty-eighth of June, caller states that his neighbor is yelling at his son, telling him he is going to cut his finger off. July tenth, the caller states Aaron was going onto different properties and looking into windows. July seventeenth, the caller states that Aaron is harassing him and following him in the park. On the twentieth of July, the caller states that Aaron is harassing his employees at the Take Five Oil Change Service and he was trespassed from that facility. Eight-two, the caller states Aaron is harassing his son while he is riding his scooter in the area and yelling at him. Eight-three, caller states that Aaron was cha- uh, asking children, uh, if they would take twenty dollars to see their feet. On the eighteenth of, uh, August, caller states that he saw his neighbor hit a, hit a kid that was on his bike. That was a ten-year-old boy in our neighborhood that Aaron walked out on the street and put his hands on and hit him. Even though there was a witness and the boy stated to the police officer that Aaron had hit him, it, all it states in the docket is that long-form charges were filed and it's never been taken to court. Says will be going long-form for simple assault. On eight-nineteen, the caller states his son is outside riding a scooter and his neighbor is yelling profanities at him. Going long-form for disorderly conduct again. On eight-thirty-one, there's, uh, an assault record there. I don't know if Aaron was assaulted or if he assaulted anybody else. There was no notes in that docket. On nine-seventy, he made an inappropriate con- uh, comment to a fourteen-year-old worker, um, at the dollar store and left. He was also trespassed from Burger Time. On nine-seven, the caller states his juvenile daughter was at work and the male showed up asking her to take off her glasses and see how sexy she is. On nine-two, the male was jumping and lunging at cars, making hand gestures. On nine-twenty-nine, caller reports Aaron throwing items at people who were at the curb, looking at items that were out there for the citywide cleanup. On ten-twenty, the caller states that two males appear to be fighting. A second caller called and said a male named Aaron is showed up at her house and is trying to attack her husband. Don't know what happened there as a result as well. Aaron was sent on his way, it says. Twelve-five, the caller states a man walks by her house and makes sexual jokes towards her. The man also speaks with her children and makes sexual, sexual jokes with them as well. Twelve-twenty-eight, caller reports a suspicious male in the store trying to pay money to see, um, their employees' feet. Also states that the male was talking about bribing, bribing juveniles for sex. States the male was making these statements in front of the cashier at Family Dollar. Subject was picked up by his brother. One-dash-six, twenty-twenty-five, um, I made a call that he was yelling at my wife because these, as soon as these charges got dismissed for the Class C felony terrorizing for my daughter, he made the comment that the, the police and the courts will not touch him. So, he's now stepped up his game and makes every point, every point to harass us every time we come out of our home. We do not try to make contact with this gentleman. We do not try to talk to him and I know he's on the spectrum. And I know that he needs help and even if he's not responsible for his behavior, his behavior is infringing on my family's rights. My daughter can't have friends come over because their families know what our neighbor is like. She's afraid to go out and play because she's afraid she is gonna be attacked by this man. It just amazes me that over the last ten years of this behavior, that nothing has been done about this. I'm asking for the city for help for a solution. I'd like to have the city help to find a solution for this as far as finding, you know, a facility for this man or supervision because he obviously needs it. He's been, he's been warned by the police department over ten times not to talk to children over the last nine years. He's had twenty-six calls for harassment, fifteen calls for suspicious activity, eighteen calls for disorderly conduct, ten calls for trespassing, one for terrorizing, three for assault, thirteen calls for public assistance, two for threats and intimidation, twelve calls for welfare check for people that seen him alongside the road trying to flag them down, two for loitering, two judicial violations, two for extra patrol. Twelve times he was told to leave children alone, that I could read through the police dockets, twenty-five times involving children. I have video that my wife took of him assaulting a man in front of the house, in front of his house that was parked there. And he didn't want the man parked there. So, he pushed the man and pushed him until he got, the man got into his car and then he tried to slam the car door on his legs. Twenty-plus of these occurrences or phone calls were about people feeling uncomfortable that he was talking about wanting to see their feet. Some of them where he's playing in his pockets. Four times that we know of that he's tried to get a minor in his home. One time threatening to kill a minor, which is my daughter. And I am here tonight because she doesn't feel safe and I think there's enough history here to show that this is not a safe situation. I've tried to take the proper channels to go through a court, you know, to rectify the situation. I've had no help from the court because the charges get dismissed because of his mental capacity. I don't know how a person that's not responsible for themselves can live on their own and behave the way they want to and other peoples be at risk. Which is why I'm asking for help, whether it be through the city attorney, city manager, mayor, Tom Ross, any of the council members to help come up with a solution. I, um, I had confided in Sergeant Foley. I've also, um, brought about ten letters today from neighbors that know through personal accounts that this man is not safe to be in our neighborhood, to not be supervised. I mean, if he's got somebody that can watch his behavior and keep the unacceptable things contained, I'm, I'm all for it, you know? But I've, I've had, you know, thirteen years of this and I'm tired. I want my daughter to be able to go outside and feel like she can play without being harassed. I want my wife to feel like she can go out and garden and not be harassed. Stuff that's not in here, that hasn't been reported to the police. We have a neighbor across the street that was over at Aaron's home and I don't know what happened, but Aaron wrestled him to the ground and broke his leg in three places. The man spent the better part of a year or better in the nursing home because his leg was broken and now he is failing because he's failing to thrive. This is a public risk, you know, mostly to children. Uh, I can put up with a lot and I've been very patient over the years with what we've had to deal with, being swore at on a daily basis. People coming over, contractors. I mean, if you talk to a UPS driver or a FedEx driver that runs the route on our street, they don't even wanna drop stuff off because they get, anybody that stops on the road, it's like he's looking out his window and wants to go out and engage them and ask to see their feet. We've seen them, people push him down. We've, we've made probably half a dozen to a dozen calls to the police department on his behalf because people were out to get him and wanted to assault him. And I don't want him assaulted. I want the best situation for him as well, for him to thrive. But right now, people in our community are not being protected from him, whether he knows the difference between right and wrong. And it's a safety risk that I request the city's help with to try to address. I can't initiate an involuntary committal. I can't go and ask my neighbor to be evaluated by, you know, a mental health facility. I was also told that these charges for this young boy that was hit by this man would not be followed through with after it was found that he's not responsible for his actions. So, those charges were being held until they waited to see what the results were from my daughter's Class C felony terrorizing charge that he had. Well, when he's not deemed to know the difference between right and wrong, those charges were null and void. So, now he thinks he is, you know, truly untouchable and he's really stepped up his game for his unacceptable behavior. And we need to be protected somehow, you know? And I'm asking for some help, ideas, whether the, and I think I might have talked to you one time at the, the city courts when the charges were dropped because of our state legislature. And if, if nothing else, um, I know there's enough dockets and records here to show that this man cannot behave himself and his behavior is getting worse as time goes by.
Take care of, I'm gonna have Steph step in to, to give us an update or give us a response.
Yes, and Mayor, Council and Mr. Gerhart, I'm, I'm glad you stated you remembered me because I was gonna ask that. I remember speaking with you at the outset of a lot of these cases with this individual. And, um, I stress for us too, this has been probably not equally as frustrating, but more frustrating on a stance where we've racked our brains on how we can help in this situation. We've reached out to protection and advocacy. We've reached out to Vulnerable Adult Protective Services. We've reached out to North Central, um, Independence, Inc., uh, most recently the Attorney General's Office. And from our stance, it's really difficult to figure out where we can stand as a city and where we can help in these situations because so many of these other organizations that are, um, are founded to help people that have disabilities look at it as voluntary services. And so, throughout this whole time, we've also been trying to figure out ways to help. One of the ways that we found out that we could maybe do that is we got involved with the, um, North Dakota League of Cities in a municipal court rewrite where they've, they're advocating on amending state law to allow municipal courts to refer individuals that may be in need of mental health services to, um, district court for an evaluation. That's a, that's a big step forward for us because we haven't had that opportunity here in the past. And we, we hopefully, if that bill were to pass and become law, my understanding is it's House Bill 1032 at present. And I believe it's made its way to the House and it's being analyzed by the Senate now. So, um, it's something that I hope passes because it's gonna give us an avenue that we didn't have available, um, here before. So, um, we have been advocating to try to help in this, in this regard. And, um, one thing that I think is, is really hopeful is that just yesterday that a guardianship, a petition was filed, um, seeking full guardianship of this particular individual. So, um, I wish that, that action could have been taken by a state agency. My understanding is that it's Catholic Charities that is stepping up to the plate to help this particular individual. So, um, hopefully that will offer some relief on its way forward. It's very early in these stages, um, having just been filed yesterday. So, um,
You know, I've been, I've been talk, I apologize for if I interrupted you. I, uh, I've, I've been told by, um, people that, you know, if he does have an involuntary committal, he gets an evaluation then to figure out if he can live on his own.
And so, an involuntary committal is different from a petition for guardianship. So, those are two completely separate proceedings. Um, so, right now, my understanding is what's been filing is a, a guardianship petition. It's seeking full guardianship of, of this individual that's at hand. So, um, involuntary committals are actions that would be initiated by the state's attorney's office and that's what's not, not what's occurring in this particular instance. It's, um, a private organization and an individual that's stepping up to the plate to try to, to help this particular individual and hopefully offer some relief to the community.
My, my contention with that though is that I, I, through witnessing this behavior, through also having a, a court ordered pr- protection order violated twice, know that this man cannot contain his behavior. If, say for instance, if we did have the involuntary committal done, for instance, they go through a test to see if this man is able to live on his own. If he's got the basic skills to live on his own, he gets sent back home. But can he behave himself? And then he's not responsible for his behavior. My daughter's rights are not being protected here. My, my now ten-year-old daughter, almost eleven, is not being protected. This is not okay, that his rights are more important than hers. And trust me, I respect his rights. But he's put his hands on children and that is unacceptable. And for him to be on his own and not be responsible for his behavior, I don't see how that can, that can be established. He can't have his cake and eat it too. If he doesn't know the difference between right and wrong and he's already established a history of violence, why is this allowed to continue on in our community? If nothing else, if you take the rights part out of, the civil rights part out of this, it is a risk and it's a nuisance. There's kids that have been touched. There's a man that have, has had his leg broken in three spots. It's just unacceptable and, and you can see the trend is getting worse and worse. Over half of these calls to service in the last nine years have been in the last year, fifty-nine of them. If, do we wait until a kid really gets hurt? I said to the court the last time when those Class C felony, felony terrorizing charges were dismissed. So, if he finally does do something and decides to kill my youngest daughter, does he get to go home? What happens? I want somebody to help. You know, I've done everything I can to try to protect my daughter and the other children in the neighborhood with trying to go through the proper channels and the courts and stuff like that. And it's not helping. He's more violent as the years go by. He's angrier. He hits and yells at his brother when his brother tries to come and give him assistance. This is, this isn't acceptable in our community. And I want someone's help that has some authority in our city to follow through with this. I've been to, you know, court, I went to the legislature and all I've run into is walls and legal lip service. This is a, this is a threat. This is a public nuisance, even though it may not be his fault. And I want him to thrive too. I don't, I don't hate this man. I've stopped people from assaulting him when it's been so easy to not like him with what he's done to my family. And I, I want the city to help me with a solution.
That's fair. Hang on one second. I think Paul was, well, Paul first.
At the onset, you had mentioned you spoke to the state's attorney's office. What is their direction to you? What are, what, what is the next step with them? And I don't know if Dale would have any, any insight into this process for, uh, you know, a non-committal or a-
The state's attorney's office advised me to go to the courthouse- The state's attorney's office advised me to go to the courthouse and apply for a no contact order. No contact order, the precedence has been set that he's not responsible for his actions. So even if he violated a no contact order, he's not gonna be arrested now.
We'll have some, we have the police chief, uh, right behind you. We'll have him, Dale, provide some comments.
So I can definitely echo our officer's frustration in the same, um, same manner he did. Uh, there, we wanna do more for you. What it comes down to is there's a very strict procedure in how we follow and what we follow in terms of Form One committals. And I will also mention that we're not allowed to talk about Form One. That's, that is protected under, under privacy law or under, uh, um, open records law. So that's not something that we can discuss. But, uh, there, there are, just, just in general, there are strict rules that we follow in terms of whether they can be utilized or cannot be utilized. I can say that, uh, referrals have been made in terms of this gentleman. Um, but I can't get into much more than that. I can definitely say that there is a lot of frustration and we will continue to respond when you call us. I know that's of little consolation, but we will continue to respond and we'll take appropriate actions to the best of our ability by the law. So, I know you're asking for more, you're asking for a change in, in procedure or law and that's.
No, I don't think I'm asking for that. I'm asking for the protection of people's rights as well. And if that's not being done right now because it's more important, you know, he's put hands on children. Hit them, assaulted a man that I got on video.
I can, I can say that everybody's rights are important and I don't disagree with you in this situation. I, I, I echo your frustration.
So what if, uh, he does get a young boy in his house and doesn't come out? Does find a way to hurt my daughter and kill her because he's upset with my family for trying to hold him accountable for his behavior? I think there's enough track record there. There's ten years of this.
I will, I, like I said, I will let go, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent in terms of, of your frustrations. But I can tell you the criminal justice system has made the decision that he's, that's not the appropriate location for him. It's the social system that needs to take care of this at this point. We, we need to find a solution for him in that system. Work with North Central in that respect. Process of Catholic charity stepping in is a, is a definite move in the right direction. I can't comment in terms of whether they're gonna be able to arrange housing, but it's a step in the right direction.
Okay, um, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, and, and maybe a question for Steph more than anything else. But as I, as I looked this up online, it looks like the key cog in this entire, uh, commitment process is the state's attorney. That's it. They're, they have to be the advocate. The only other way you can do it is an attorney retained by the individual. So Mr. Gerhart could retain an individual to try to make this happen. But two of the three bullets state the state's attorney are, is the, is the key person. I think maybe Paul, that's kinda where you were headed. Because this isn't just, oh, can I, can I get a different type of protection order? They have a, a, a portion of the law that's directly written for them, for the state's attorney to actually make this happen. Because I'll, I'll tell you what, you know, as I'm listening, Mr. Gerhart, what I get scared about is that you run into the wrong parent and this'll end bad very quickly, okay? If one of my children was being dragged towards a house by an adult, we'd have a very big problem. And so, Mr. Gerhart, I, you know, I, I sympathize here. I, to be honest, I can't believe that it's gone on this long without something very, very bad happening. I'm, I'm just being honest about that. I think, I think we, you know, and I'll be happy to try and do it tomorrow. But if there's a better way, I'm open to what staff thinks is the right approach here. But our state's attorney needs to step up and, and, and move in the right direction because that's what the law says. That's the way the mental, that's the way the committal happens. There's no other path. It's probably why the judges aren't doing anything because they don't have any power to do anything. Am I, am I off base? Am I missing something in the way the law is written?
So I'm not gonna say the judges don't have power to do anything and I'm not gonna say that the state's attorney doesn't have power to do anything. She has to act on information that's provided to her as well. So we have reached out to her in the past to discuss this issue. She's extraordinarily busy. And she has, I believe she's getting ready for the Anita Knutson murder trial here that's imminent here in the next couple of weeks. So not to minimize the situation here at all. This has been equally as frustrating for us trying to get some kind of traction on this front for this particular individual. But there is an involuntary, there is a voluntary, excuse me, guardianship petition pending right now as of yesterday. I have been in touch with the attorney that's assigned to that particular case with that petition as early as this afternoon. And so we're in the process of getting her as much information as we can to make sure that that's successful, not only for the community, but for this individual as well. So we can certainly reach out to the state's attorney's office and see, um, what her capacity is to step in with this. But we also don't want two competing petitions either. So my thought moving forward is if you'll be in touch with our office, Mr. Gerhart, we can put you in touch with that attorney and the people who are gonna be working through that petition process to kinda see what they envision that guardianship looking like. And see if that meets your satisfaction. And if it doesn't, we can kind of look at alternate routes as well.
And I, I think something might've been started already because Officer Sergeant Foley had called me on Friday afternoon and said that he was sitting with the state's attorney, I think Rosa Larson, at, at that point in time. And they were trying to, you know, work on a solution. And he asked me to get, um, you know, these letters from the neighbors that, you know, had submitted letters to me and to bring them to the police station on Tuesday if we could to have them notarized. Well, there are only a few people that could make it to the police station today to have these letters notarized about his behavior and their feel of his risk to our community and our children in the neighborhood. But I have, I do have ten letters here of people in our neighborhood that have, you know, seen his behavior, that have had their children approached, uh, that have had him put their hands on his, on their children and have found this to be absolutely unacceptable. And there's nothing protecting them.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Go ahead, Rob.
So I guess Steph, just to ask you real quick, with the Catholic services looking for guardianship, does that mean they will have somebody twenty-four seven care with him? Do they, are they gonna move him out of that residence? Because, I mean, what I'm, what I'm terrified of is kinda what Mike spoke of and, and what Mr. Gerhart is talking about. I mean, one of two things is gonna happen. A child is gonna get hurt or some parent is gonna hurt him. And, and that leaves the city at liability because we are sitting here hearing about it and not doing nothing for ten years. I, and I realize our hands are somewhat tied. But at some point, we have to stop making excuses and saying, hey, that isn't for us to do or the, it's not the state's attorney's job to do or whatever. And we have to just do something to protect the general public and the city as a whole.
So for purposes, if, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So for purposes of saying the city hasn't done anything, I dispute that up and down. We've made arrests in this case. We've brought him into municipal court numerous times. We have worked with the League of Cities to introduce legislation to allow mental health referrals through House Bill 1032, which we're advocating for at the legislature and encouraging them to, to pass that. Um, we've been in touch with numerous social services organizations, asking them to get involved in these particular cases. I've been in touch with the attorney that's, um, in regard to this guardianship petition. We haven't been doing nothing. I would dispute that. I've sat in many meetings over the years where we've.
I apologize. I, what I meant was we're not able to get to the satisfaction level that he needs.
Which, and we're attempting to do that. But at the same time, like, there are competing interests here as well. There's multiple avenues to work through this. And one of which is this guardianship petition that wasn't on our radar before. So in terms of how they envision that guardianship, um, being put in place, I can't state as to what I think their exact means are. Typically what happens is they'll appoint what's called a guardian ad litem and a visitor to go in and visit those individuals and kind of deter, assess the situation. There will probably be some kind of an evaluation that's done by a mental health provider as well. And they'll make a joint recommendation to the judge and the petitioner as to what type of arrangement they think is appropriate there. So it's, it's not just one person going in and making a decision. It's a collection of people that go in, um, with expertise in various areas, including mental health, to try to determine what's the best route to success for that particular individual. So, but I do think Mr. Gerhart needs to be a part of that conversation. You've had significant experience with this individual. We have put Sergeant Foley in charge of gathering all of the information that you've listed, putting them all into a packet and making it available for both the state's attorney will make that available for this petitioner as well. So they can take all of that into consideration when deciding how best to approach the situation.
Yeah, and if at all possible, and I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, if at all possible, you know, when there's a mental evaluation or something like that, um, and the court is considering this, they, they should have all the information. I think that they're not seeing, you know, this track record of behavior. And they need to be aware of it because I requested it and they went through all the calls to service and not all the calls to service are in here, you know? It's, it's just been a long road and.
When you say they're not in there, are you referring to the information compiled by Sergeant Foley?
Yeah, all the calls to service, um, you know, like when, when the man's leg was broken, you know, at his house. That was in the last few years. He, the gentleman spent a year in the nursing home, you know, to regain his, uh, ability to take care of himself. And his daughter's here this evening too. She may wanna, you know, elaborate on that a little bit. But, um, it's, it's stressful. And I wish I could, you know, sell my house and move to a different location. But there is no possible way at this point in time I would be able to sell my home because anybody who stops on the street, he comes out and engages with them and wants to see their feet. I've been told by realtors here in town, including Scott Louser, that I would probably not be able to sell my home in the current situation. So I'm, I'm stuck. I don't know what else to do. So that's why I'm, I'm here to, you know, beg for your advocacy, beg for your help to, you know, stay vigilant on this and come up with some sort of a solution, even if it's something that takes time. You know, and we're working through the courts to come up with a solution that, you know, helps Aaron himself thrive in his life. But, you know, the, the anger and treatment that he's displaying right now and it's getting worse and worse, I don't know what to do. I don't know if I, if I call the police, if they just continue to arrest him and let him go. I don't know. But the precedent is set right now that he's not responsible for his behavior.
Well, I mean, I don't, excuse me, Mayor, but I don't wanna speak for the police chief, but I think, I think he'd assure that they would respond.
Okay.
They're, they're here to keep the peace.
Would he be arrested then if a law is broken or? That's my, that's my other question.
So I, I can tell you, it's not our job, it's not our responsibility to know what his mental capacity is. So we will make an arrest when that's justified. The courts have to handle it from there to make determination. So yes, if, if, if there is a justifiable reason to make an arrest, that will occur. And, and like I said before, um, there are other, other options that we can utilize as well. But we are limited on what we can and can't do. So, um, but if you call us, we will, we will respond, we will investigate. The, the court makes a determination of whether he's competent to stand trial.
Please step, step closer to the mic so everybody can hear.
So I guess my question would be is if, uh, my wife is leaving her house. Just to give you an example, she had offered to take some children of another friend of ours to school because the friend had an early shift she had to work. She wasn't able to take the children to school. So three children that are not ours are at her home and being walked out to my wife's pickup. And he's out in the yard screaming at her with profanities and telling her she's going to hell. And these children are having to see it. So I don't know if that would qualify as disorderly conduct or?
It, it could and it depends on, I mean, an investigation would be done. And in terms of what can be done right now, follows state law and city ordinance for that matter. So when you can make a warrant, warrantless arrest, follow state law. I can't comment on every scenario. I can't comment on that scenario. I didn't investigate that scenario. So I just don't, I don't have an answer for you right now.
So Mr. Gerhart, I, I do appreciate you stepping up and talking to us and, and bringing this up. I've sat on that street two or three times after receiving phone calls. So I'm, I'm familiar with that area very much. Uh, I've seen the gentleman out. So I know and, and I feel for you. I, I, I know now that, um, it's on our radar even more. Um, I think this is an opportunity to keep the discussion going. I know Mike Alderman-Blessam, you wanted to add a few more comments. But I think we're at, I think we're at a spot now to where, uh, we need to have some, we need to, we need to play the option that we have, which is the, the guardianship uh, and, and really kind of focus on that.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was gonna add, and there's, there's a piece that hits that, but I, I just wanted to sort of restate and, and maybe have Steph validate where, where I think we are. Because as I look at the mental health commitment process, it involves the state's attorney and it involves affidavits from affected individuals. And it sounds like that may be the process that the state's attorney is maybe working through as a parallel to the guardianship. The thing that I get nervous, nervous with, with guardianship, and there may be different types. So I, you know, I could be wrong here. But the ones I've been familiar with, I mean, I've, I've got someone that I know who's a guardian for her brother who's in Colorado and he lives on his own. So there's, there's guardianship and then there's, I'm putting you in this place where you can't hurt others. And what I don't wanna end up with is, you know, we think the guardianship is the right path, but then it's, yep, we stop in twice a week and make sure he hasn't burned the place down. There's, there's very specific circumstances here that I think need to be followed through. So I just wanted to make sure that feels to me like where we are. It feels like maybe the state's attorney is taking some steps. The guardianship process is starting, but we're at the beginning. And so I think, you know, I think probably most of us sitting up here are ready to run through a wall and try to get this fixed. But I'm willing to, to step back if staff has got this under control and to see it through. But I feel like it needs to happen soon. This is accelerating. The, the end of these stories, as you watch them, when it goes from twenty-three to fifty to a hundred and twenty, that next step is very bad, one way or the other. And I, I feel like it's, this is something that's gotta move.
Real quick.
Go ahead, Rob.
Well, and, and just to Mike's point, and I'd, I'd spoke with Mr. Gerhart last week. Mr. Barstow's brother is his fiduciary responsibility. So the state says he can't even take care of his own money, right? He, his money is doled out to him, but he can live on his own. That's, and, and to Mike's point, that's exactly the type of guardianship that we don't want because it doesn't stop that individual from harassing, harming, or getting in other people's faces. So.
And so, um, Council there, and Mr. Gerhart, guardianships are, they do have varying degrees of control. Some of them can be limited, um, guardianships, sometimes people voluntarily will sign over, especially in cases of elder care, diminished mental capacity. They'll sign over control of their finances to somebody else just because they don't want to have that responsibility of themselves. So you, just because you have a guardianship doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's limited to one thing or another. It's a typically a group of people that are all making those decisions in and above themselves. I mean, Mr., this individual be able to state what he wants, but that isn't necessarily what the court's gonna order based upon the expertise of other people. So, um, so my plan after this meeting is to get in touch with Mr. Gerhart. We together can contact the attorney that's working through the guardianship and see if we can get a feel for one side or the other, what they're going to pursue in this particular instance. She may not know. It may, we may have to get past the evaluation phase. In the meantime, if something happens, I encourage you to contact law enforcement. Um, just because somebody's of a diminished mental capacity doesn't mean that they can break the law. So that's something that I encourage you to make those report every single time. If anything, you're creating more and more of a record of the occurrences of this individual and what they're doing in our community. And depending upon where that guardianship is going, we can also contact the state's attorney and see what our options, if there's any options at all that she could assist us with as well. I don't wanna get too much into the, the involuntary committal process because there are protections under state law for that. And so much of it is confidential and so we're wading into a, an area that probably isn't appropriate for a public meeting on that front.
I do have some questions for you as far as like the legislative part of it. Uh, do you? it. Do you have any influence or can you request to introduce legislative law at all or, you know? Because here, here's what I've been told is what happened. His mother passed away about 13 years ago. His mother was his guardian and his primary caregiver. Since that time, he hasn't had a guardian. It's just been him. You know, so I think what should be a suggestion to be proposed into law is if you have somebody that is mentally disabled enough to where their actions, they are not responsible for, they should be required to have a guardian that oversees their behavior and controls it in some way, shape or form. And right now, that's been left by the wayside for the last 13 years. He's, hasn't had a guardian. His brother is only his financial power of attorney. He's not power of attorney over his mental health or behavior or, it's just something that I would suggest if there's any way that we can propose legislation, because right now, the way the laws are written, he could go out and hurt somebody and go straight back home. I don't understand, you know, why there's that gap there, but there is, you know.
I'm not going to down, I'm not downplaying this by any means, but I think the next step in this process is for you and our city attorney to get together to have that discussion.
Sure.
And it doesn't, I, and I'm not saying it doesn't have to happen, but I think you can discuss more kind of on a one-on-one situation. So I think we've carried it as far as we can go tonight.
Okay.
If, but I do appreciate you coming forward, bringing it forward, but I think the next step in this process is having that, that offline conversation.
Sure. And I know there may be a couple more people here that want to share their experiences. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, you were, you were very thorough. And if there was any, if, if the other speakers that are coming up behind you, if there's any new information, other than that, than that, then we will take that on.
Okay.
But we have, I think we have exhausted as much as we can do from the dais right now.
And Mr. Gerhart, I sent you an email earlier this afternoon on this, this matter, including the information for the guardianship petition. If you respond to that email, we can set up a time to talk further.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Continuing on for those who wish to speak, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Anita Johnson and I have had contact with Aaron as well in several different ways, pretty much of what Greg Gerhart has said. I'm a school bus driver here in Minot, so I've seen quite a few things, interactions with boys that have chased him down the street in pickups because they harassed him and they're going to tase him, things like that. But not only am I just a school bus driver, I am a guardian of a man that has schizophrenia and it is not in Ward County. So I know the ins and outs and if Aaron just gets a guardian that can work with his money, make sure he takes his meds, this and that, that's as far as that attorney is going to go. As I sat here and listened to what the state's attorney can do and can't do and what the judge can do and can't do, I call a lot of BS because I had to fight to get guardianship of the individual that I did. And what it all comes down to is a judge saying, he needs a guardian, but he needs this type of guardian. He needs to be a ward of the state, for one. And the guardian that they choose, and I don't know that Catholic charities is going to go check up on him every day, they have hundreds of individuals that they take care of. Money, medical, things like that. This, what I'm asking is that when we choose him, choose a guardian for him, that we're very particular in placing him with somebody or an agency that is going to have some authority or the ward of the state or whatever. So it's not a matter of just, he's going to have a guardian, because having a guardian ain't going to fix nothing. It's basically what it's doing, it's passing the buck. It's putting Aaron's responsibility onto someone else's problem, when we're actually not even taking care of the problem, we're just passing the buck to someone else. And so that's, that's basically all I have to say. And I've been in contact with Craig pretty mu, a lot, and I call BS on a lot of stuff that's going on in the, over, in the, the system. I was in court listening to the, a case that Aaron was in and they had placed him in jail and the judge let him out of jail because it was unsafe for him to be an inmate in the jail because of his behavior. So he can't even be in a jail cell, let alone on the street. Do you hear what I'm saying? If they don't let him out of jail, they let, they let him go back home. So it's, it's just, we're chasing our tail and, and the courts have 100% say because I've been through this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Continuing on with comments from the public, for those who wish to step forward. Seeing none, we will move on to item nine on the agenda and that's miscellaneous and discussion items. Nine point one, the follow-up discussion on the police department facility. Who is going to take the lead on that one?
We have a representative from EAPC here. Again, staff is following through on direction from council previously on regarding pulling together some costs, explore some options. Mr. Dosert is here tonight to speak to the recommendations and answer any questions that they, that the council may have. And then after the discussion, staff is looking for direction from council on how you would like us to go forward.
Good evening. My name's Alan Dosert. I'm the president of EAPC. I have set for you tonight a breakdown of fees and basically there's four, actually three parts, three major parts to this fee, and they were basically directions from council and from staff in terms of how to proceed with additional study on reduced cost and reduced scope of work on the, on the study that we put together. Items one and two are kind of being done jointly and those are looking at a $25 million solution and a $12 million solution. Originally I had mistakenly had that at 15 million and this new fee summary corrects that and amended some of the fees that went with that to make it accordance with a 12 and a 25. So those two are actually being done kind of together because that process is a process where we look at our original study, we look at the sort of things that we can afford to do and it's sort of taking a look at the whole picture and then taking away pieces to get to a balanced budget at those two numbers. The other two items, number three and four, are added scope in that we're looking at the potential of incorporating what this might look and how it might be applied to put the police station on the parking ramp. And that's an option that we hadn't really looked at at all. It hadn't been part of consideration, so that takes a little bit extra work to, to take a look at that as a single effort. And the last effort is taking a look at the, the leftover commercial space within the parking ramp that's adjacent to the transit offices. I should say it's transit, well, the bus area anyways, and, and looking if the municipal courts, how they would fit into that space. I'm quite certain they'd go in there. We have some concerns about circulation and so forth and all that will become apparent when we do the study, but the square feet isn't quite what we had programmed, but it's certainly vastly more than what they have right now. So it's a valid, a valid thing to take a look at. Questions?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, did you what?
I don't have a question for you.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you. Discussion, Paul.
And maybe this would be for, for Harold or any, any other department head. As far as if we were to go down the route of, of, let's say we look into it and parking ramp is, is the decision, the route we would like to go, is there any plan or any, any inkling of what would happen to that building? Old City Hall, the, the legacy building, anything we call it? Has there been any discussions as to what that, that could be utilized as? Or are we just going to be sitting on another vacant building?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman-Bitner, I think there's a variety of alternatives. I don't know that we've gone really deep down those alternatives because we're looking for clarity of, you know, what do we do with the police department first and foremost? But I believe there's a variety of alternatives, all the way from demolition of the building. There was some talk previously about whether or not that could be repurposed as a library. You know, it could be demolished, turned into parking, that can serve as parking to the auditorium. I mean, there's, there's a variety of, of, of options and alternatives, but we haven't gone significantly in depth in those conversations because our primary focus has been how are we going to handle the, the issue and the challenge in front of us right now, which is the police department? Because if the, the will of the council and the community is that we remodel the building, then we don't need to explore those other alternatives.
Lisa.
Thank you. So is there any consideration or discussion on municipal court going anywhere else? I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of looking at this unless there is some other discussion of it going to a different location.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Olson, we have looked at a variety of alternatives throughout time. You know, we looked at, well, part of the EAPC study was a recommendation that we build a standalone building up on the top of the hill to the south of it. So that's one option, alternative. When we remodeled this building for the city hall, we looked at the option of moving it over here and that wasn't, from a, a space needs analysis and from safety issues and some of those types of things, that wasn't advised at this time. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we looked at alternatives of moving it over into the county. We requested it go into the county courthouse. That ran into some issue and concerns of the judges and those kinds of things that that wasn't well received. We did look at the alternative of moving into the county administration building where in the state offices moved out, but there were significant costs associated with remodel and some security issues and those kinds of things that it probably wasn't as cost-effective as, as potentially looking at finishing out the commercial space. So we've looked at several alternatives with regards to municipal court and, and we continue to make do with the space that we have that is fairly inadequate at this time until we get further direction.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, with, so Harold, you know, given what Captain Pless has talked about a little bit earlier with some of the discussions that are going on there, is, is there any thought that we're maybe a little early it, with this process? There's that side of it, which, you know, they're talking about, you know, what's the short-term need and what are they looking at? The other side of it is getting a permanent chief in place and should, should a new permanent chief be part of this process? So I guess what I'm asking is are we, are we four to six months early on this work?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman-Blessam, I guess ultimately that's a, that's at the discretion of the city council on how soon you want to do this. At the end of the day though, the space needs are the space needs and it doesn't really matter who your police chief is. The decision of whether we're going to remodel our current facility or build a new one, a, a new chief may have a difference of opinion on that, but ultimately it's the council and the community's decision on how much we're willing to spend and what we're willing to do. I don't really see where the permanent police chief has a, a lot of bearing on that. And again, I'll reiterate that with what Captain Pless has said today, we, they are looking at ways to use the current space more fully temporarily, but they're not looking at long-term permanent solutions like what we got through the EAPC study and those kinds of things. So again, all that takes us back to the crossroads again of what's the direction of the council? Are we remodeling? Are we going to try and, you know, invest money into making the current facility meet our needs for however many years the EAPC can tell us that whatever investment amount of money is going to buy us? Or are we going to do a more long-term approach and potentially look at construction of a new facility? And I'm not necessarily advocating for any one of those alternatives over another, but really that's, that's the crossroads that we find ourselves at and ultimately what staff is asking for direction from the council is what options and alternatives do you want city staff to spend its time and resources on?
Rob?
Thank you. I guess, and to kind of add on what Mike was saying, I, if, if the police department has a group of people together looking at what they want to do short-term, I mean, I know it's not the long-term solution, but, you know, and they come up with, with something that works for them, does that get us one to five years? You know, where we have a little bit more time to decide? You know, if we, again, because right now, I think we all realize that if the state legislature and the, the state put caps into place, our property tax dollars are going to be pretty tied up. Our sales tax dollars are already tied up through the NOS and the flood control project. You know, having $15 million to throw at something without bonding our, our children into the next 20, 25 years again is, is something that we don't have a luxury to have. So, I mean, what, what I'm asking is not necessarily to stop this process, but if they're, if they're looking at something down there where we can throw in a minimal amount of money to make it workable for them, is this something that we can have a discussion on in 12 months or six months or whatever it may be?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, I mean, we can keep deferring as long as we would like to, but I will tell you that through the last couple of budget processes that we've been through, we have deferred some significant costs that are probably need to be looked at with that building, anticipating a, a direction from the council on, on what we're doing. My understanding is from the study that, I mean, there's significant HVAC issues, there may be some roof issues. I mean, all these are big ticket items that staff isn't comfortable building into a budget if that's not going to be the long-term solution, right? Because we could probably buy, you know, a couple more years out of it, which would be the construction time for something else. But if it's the will of the council and the community that we remodel this, then maybe some of those investments make more sense, but we need to look at that in a more comprehensive approach rather than doing very expensive Band-Aid fixes as time goes on. And so, and we've already deferred those conversations and, and those budgetary items for the last couple of years as, as we've gone through the process that we've already been through for the last couple of years. So we can continue to, to push it, but again, that, some of that infrastructure out there doesn't really care how long you push it out. It's going to break when it breaks and those come with some pretty big price tags that we don't currently have budgeted.
Paul?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, I'll ma, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to direct EAPC to look at items number one and two and item number four.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Calling for a second. Final call. Motion fails for lack of a second. Lisa.
Oh, thank you. So I, I would take a different approach to it because I think we know, we have a lot of information about what we can do in the current building and the limitations that that current building has, but we don't have information about building on the, the parking garages. And so my motion would be to direct EAPC to look at option three because that's, that's truly the mystery that we have right now is what, what can we do and how much would it cost to build on those parking garages?
So we have a motion for option three. Is there a second? Calling for a second. Final call.
I'll call first, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Do you want to go?
I, I guess, I'll speak to this motion again. I, I, I'm probably, I'm not going to vote for it, I'll be honest with you, because if we got to put a new roof on the old building, we got to put a new roof on the new building. We got to put a HVAC system in, we got to put an HVAC system in either one of them. These, these infrastructure costs are going to be the same across the board. Not, not the same, excuse me, but, but, but a lot of these, these, these costs are, Alderman Samson, you're the one I think that said you were embarrassed when you went through that building and what our officers have to deal with. We're talking about the morale of these officers and, and new recruits coming into this building and, and people going out and how it's not a building we can be prideful of, but yet we're sitting here talking about, you guys will be fine, we'll take, we'll talk about you in a year. I'm not on board with that. I can't be on board with that, but I can also can't be on board with putting the, I, I truly believe as, as a steward of taxpayer dollars and, and the interest of the city, I believe that those parking ramps are best going back into the, into the, out from underneath uh, the I believe that those parking ramps are best going back into the, out from underneath the city of Minot. I think it's better if they are developed by a developer, get back on the tax roll and become an asset in that fashion. I'm not an advocate of putting it on top of the buildings. But again, I think something needs to be done and we don't know what we don't know. We directed for a $12 million and a $25 million budget and tell us what we can do with that. But now we're saying, we'll talk about you guys in a year. You know, we talk about being here and having their backs and supporting them and supporting them through their, not only mental health and also resources. But now we're saying, you know what, $18,000 and another $9,000, we'll talk about it in a year. I just, I can't, I'm a little embarrassed to be honest with you, having these comments.
Mr. Mike?
Yeah, and I guess, I don't necessarily disagree, Paul. The one thing that I would say is that, I think where we're headed, and this kind of gets to what Alderman Fuller was talking about. Where we're headed is that the balance we're going to be trying to strike as we go forward is, yes, we've got to invest in facilities and that's really important. But we also have to pay everybody and we also have to take care of their benefit costs. And we've got a lot of, you know, again, we go back just a few weeks ago and we approved, you know, a million and a half dollars in new firefighters going forward. That's now, we've got that new commitment in the future years. So we've got to balance all of this with the legislature that's going to be putting a big restraint on that. And so, you know, that's, I brought these motions, you know, where my mind is going and I'm with you, I'm not going to support this motion. You know, I might be interested in a motion that looks at just one and two right now. But to give you my real thought here, I think we need, number one, to let the legislature finish its work. We're looking at at least April. And that we take a look at this as we go through our budget process and what that's all going to look like for the future. Because if we don't have an option that allows us to even look at a $25 million option, to Alderman Fuller's point, we're sort of sunk. You know, we're at a spot where we don't even have the ability to do it. And we got to, we got to talk with the finance team to figure out where the funding even comes from, even if we did want to do it. So, you know, I have a hard time getting any of this work done now with the legislature and the things going on there looming over us.
Rob?
Thank you. First, Paul, to your statement, you know, when I said, we have a building down there, the old city hall. So I'm not saying that we kick this down the road a year and say, hey, we'll look at it then. I think we have to put some money into the facility now. But we have between 4,000 and 7,500 square feet of space that hasn't been used in two years since we moved out of the old city hall. Now imagine if we could spread them out a little bit into that space for, say, $3 million. Not a small amount of money, but let's say we give them $3 million and we can spread them out into that space, move things around. Give them the gym like they talked about and some other things that they are looking for and open up that space. I think that gives us the alternative, like Mike was saying, to wait and see what the legislature is going to do. And then to figure out where we're going to come up with the money, whether it be a $25 million renovation of the old building or a $20 million or a $15 million or a $50 million brand-new building. But what I was just suggesting is not to kick the can down the road. I mean, we're going to have to give them some money. But I think we can come up with, you know, $1 to $3 million a lot easier than we can come up with 15 million or 12 million or any of those other figures that we've been kicking around. And it will get them the space that they need. It will get them some of the amenities that I think for the wellness, the health and mental well-being that they need. And again, you know, not kicking the can down the road, but it gives us time to evaluate what we're going to do. So, I don't know. I don't think the parking garage option unfortunately is a starter for me because that's going to be the most expensive option, quite honestly, for any of it. So, but again, I'm not suggesting we don't have the police department's back. I'm just simply suggesting that we can make them comfortable with what they have down there at a reduced cost to the citizens. And then figure out what is the best path forward.
Lisa?
Thank you. And I'll just, I'll go back to the parking garage location because it is a body, or it's not a body, it is a building that we own. And so we don't have to make the investment in purchasing property. We have it. It's in a downtown location. It is near city hall. All of those things are benefits and we don't know that it would be the most expensive option because we've never looked into it. And that's why I advocate for it. Whatever the decision is, I think we need to move forward. So I'll agree with everyone that we need to make a decision, we need to make a commitment. We have kicked the can down the road for way too long. And city staff, our police department, our community need to know that we're going to move forward.
Any further comments? Scott?
So I think eventually, and my thought is eventually we probably are going to need a new facility for the police. Whether that's five years, 10 years, 15 years, I think eventually it's going to happen. I've been through that building three times now. And I've made comments before that I couldn't believe what it was. But I just, over the last several weeks, saw some excitement with the committee that was put together to do something over there, to move into it. I see some officers getting together, having ideas. I saw three of them, three different ideas in two weeks. Of them working as a team down there to see what they can do with that facility. And I'm kind of excited to see it myself. And it's a, to me, it's a very inexpensive option. I remember one of the officers when we were talking, you know, really all we need over here is some paint. And there's a lot of that that is true. A lot of that stuff can be used and it's a fraction of what we're talking on any of this other stuff. And it might give them, I think they may even come up with an idea of doing this that's going to be a one-year plan, two-year plan and five-year plan. On staying in that building, that does give us some time to look at the options. And until I see what that option is, I'm just, I'm not ready to move forward. Because I really think that eventually it's going to be a new building. When that is, I don't know. But I would like to see what they come up with and what they think that they could use that for. Maybe it is 10 years, once you, once we put stuff together. I don't know what it is. So, right now, I won't support the motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion failed with dissent from Blessam, Fuller, Pittner, Ross and Samuelson.
Is there any further discussion?
Just a question.
Rob, I mean, Paul.
Thank you. For Alan, Alan, timeline, if there was to be a study done, what would be the timeline on assessing one of these alternatives? And I know that's a crystal ball question, but...
Depends on which option it is, but it'd take four to five weeks as a minimum to get there. And I guess I would add one thing to this is, we certainly could work with the existing staff, police staff and take a look at options to do something even less than like the 12 million. I think it'd make sense to look at it very holistically, but there are significant HVAC concerns. And there's significant accessibility concerns. And you might look at that and say, well, how can, you know, you have able-bodied firefighters? Accessibility concerns are mandated, period. There's no getting away from those. And then there's issues, there's a very, very good, very solid evidence lab. But the rest of the chain of handling evidence is very convoluted and not a good situation at all. So there's a lot of things inside that building that just don't work. And it could potentially lead to problems administratively with how things are handled. But yeah, I would think five, six weeks, somewhere in that range.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Alan. Any further discussion? Lisa?
All I can say is I'm not satisfied not doing anything. So I would like for us to come up with something tonight to give direction so that we can move forward.
We can make a motion for items number one and two, take a crack at that. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Just quickly, I, you know, I would prefer to defer this a few months, probably into the summer. You know, at the end of the day, I think these are the most likely scenarios in my mind, which is why I brought the motions originally to look at it this way. Because to me, this is a question of what is the budget? You know, if you're doing a kitchen reno, you want to know your budget and you go pick out your stuff based on your budget. And that was the thought process that I originally put into this. My only thought is to do this this summer. But I think this is the smarter of the options that we've got in front of us right now.
Rob?
Mr. Mayor?
You know, I guess, Lisa, you know, you say not doing anything. Chief has a group together that they've come up with three design differences already. That, you know, if they bring those to us and say, hey, we talked to our guys at the city and say, what's this going to cost us? I mean, I think we are doing something. We're just allowing the police department to do it for themselves and give us their ideas and their main ideas of benefit. Versus, you know, EAPC, which I'm sure will do a fantastic job. But, you know, I've seen the three designs that they pushed out of there and I thought they made sense. And, you know, quite honestly, to me, it doesn't feel like we're not doing anything. It feels like they're moving forward down there already. And so, you know, kind of agree with Mike, I wouldn't mind pushing this off just to see what options they come up with and what it would cost us to do what they want us to do. My thought.
Lisa?
Is there a way to involve them in conversations with EAPC? Could this be done collectively?
I think that's up to Chief and his working group, isn't it? I mean, you know, again, I'm sure EAPC does a fantastic job. But if he's put a group together that's buying into figuring out what they want down there at the PD and the gym and moving evidence and everything like that. You know, to me, I think we give them a shot, you know, and not say, hey, you need a professional to come in here and tell us how you guys want your place to look. You know, I mean, just in my mind, let's give them a shot to do it, see what it would cost us. And if we're not happy with it, in two months, we can have EAPC start this up. They said it would take five or six weeks. So, I mean, it's not like we're delaying it that long. It's not pushing it that far down the road in my mind.
I think, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, Lisa, but I think there's a, what you may be saying is, the team at the police department, they're coming up with the ideas. Maybe we can get Alan and his team involved with them so they have something of an expert when it comes to cost. And so they can put that together and come back with a plan that has a realistic number to it. Instead of coming with a plan, then we got to farm it out to get a number instead of...
We don't have anybody in the city that could tell us what it would cost us to renovate based off of what the police department wants to do? I mean, I'm asking that question, I'm not being sarcastic, I'm asking that question. We don't have anybody in the city to do that?
No, we are not interior designers or, I mean, we have a city engineer, but he specializes in roads and sidewalks. Not necessarily in designing a building even, I mean, he was the lead on helping design this building. But we were still relying on the expertise of building engineers and interior designers and everything to come up with this. And so, no, we do not have the expertise in-house to do this.
Chief?
I just wanted to make the point that my directive to them was to come up with a very low-class option. One of my concerns, and I know where an architect does come in and is an advantage to us, is we don't know what we can do without creating access problems. So, to that respect, we were going to do very minimal. We're going to move locations and try to make, and the idea is for a one, a two-year and a five-year plan. Because we just don't know how long it's going to take to get to a point where we can make a decision on this. So, from our perspective, we're not looking at major changes to the police department but changing the existing space to utilize what we can now. I hope, I mean, I hope that gives us a little bit of information as to what we're actually looking at. It's not a major architectural change. When you say somewhere in the realm of one to $3 million, I think that scares me a little bit in the sense that we don't have that expertise. I don't think ourselves to do that. We would need somebody who does have expertise.
Thank you, Chief. So, yep, Paul?
And again, I've done plenty of home renovations and home projects. That's part of my fear too, is that we're going to dump $3 million bucks, potentially, $1 to $3 million is the number that's been thrown out there. And then we're going to come and redo some of this work. And that's my concern is that how much of that money is just going to be sunk costs to the point where, well, if we would have done this from the onset, we actually would have had a cost savings at the tail end of it. So, again, that's some of my concern and I get it, I'm all about the rearranging and things like that. But if we create a pinch point with accessibility or, you know, God forbid, we have an HVAC failure in six months. Well, then we're just tied, then we're just dumping money into this building that, you know, we're going to be kind of married to. So again, some of my concerns.
Mike?
Yeah, so, you know, one thing that I think we haven't figured out as Americans and overall is how to use what we have. You know, Europe is using thousand-year-old buildings. We're ready to throw away stuff because it's 50 years old? I don't quite get it. I mean, maybe it means that the US isn't building to the quality that we should be, maybe that's the issue that we've got. But, I mean, you know, one of the things, you know, Scott talks about going through the building. The thing that struck me when we went through the building was, why in the world are we not already using the space that's open? You go on the second floor and there's office after office after office, there's the old council chamber, there's all of this space. And we haven't allowed the police department to use it. You know, we've got detectives tucked away in a bottom floor, squished together with a bunch of cubes. It works okay because they're close to each other, but we haven't utilized what we already have. I have a hard time putting it on the taxpayers' back to say, no, build us a new building because we want it and we want something shiny. I love what the captain's doing, getting the staff involved. I mean, this is, you know, everywhere I've worked, that would have been great to be able to say, hey, I got a say in what's going on here. You want morale, that's the way you build it. Treat people good and give them a say in their own destiny. So, you know, again, I'm going to resist the motion. I think we need to look at this this summer at the earliest. I think we let the captain and his team continue with what they're doing. And, you know, again, I don't like, you know, having Alan and team go through all this work and I appreciate what you guys have done. And we're likely going to need it, but I think we need a little more info and we need to keep going with where we're headed here.
Any further discussion?
Let me just...
Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Lisa's point and hearing Chief say what he had to say, I mean, I guess I'm not opposed if they think they need somebody to look at certain things, to have EAPC help them and their crew. But, you know, again, whatever direction that they want to go, if they're looking for access points and maybe ADA stuff and different things like that, and we need somebody professional. I'm not opposed to having Alan help step in and help them with that, so.
Scott?
So real quick, I will mention, and I'm glad that Dale came up and had, you know, anything that I've seen is not adding walls. There's a couple that they took out in one plan and there's one that they moved out a little bit. So this isn't like a total remodel. This is basically using what's there and painting it up and maybe some carpet. I don't even think it's going to come to $1 to $2 million for what we're talking about here. They're trying to utilize the way it is right now with very little of moving walls or changing access points or any of that. It's just basically using the structure that we have there right now, which to me is what we should be doing.
Harold?
I want to be clear here with some of the statements being made. I want to make it clear that I have not made any directive to the police department not to use the vacant space. This is a departmental decision as they've assessed this and tried to assess this internally on their own. And secondly is, I don't know what documents and plans you're referring to because I haven't seen anything. So as the city manager, I haven't been shown any temporary solutions or any drawings or anything like that. Again, I will state, we can talk about how we can rearrange. I kind of feel like, you know, I got kids that are getting ready to go to college and, you know, there may be a reshuffling of who's in what room and those kinds of things. I feel like that's kind of what we're talking about right now. But what I can say is through the EAPC study... about right now. But what I can say is, through the EAPC study, the current facility, in its current state, in its current square footage, does not meet the needs of a department our size. So we can, to use probably another, probably not the best analogy, as I get older, I need a bigger size of pants. You know, I might be wearing a 32, and I can go measure and say, I need a 36. Well, I can settle for a 34, because that's better than the 32 I'm wearing, but the measurement says I need a 36. And I feel that's kind of, I mean, I respect the council and the position that we're in with being a little bit in limbo with what the legislature is going to do with regards to property tax caps and, you know, all those kinds of things. And those do create issues and challenges. But at the end of the day, we have a real-world solution or problem here that we have to figure out how to fix, and there's going to be financial consequences to that, right? No matter what we do, whether it's a remodel or construction of a new one, we're going to have to deal with those financial consequences at some point. And staff is prepared to review through those and bring alternatives as far as how financially we could potentially make this work. And some of those solutions may be difficult and hard to accept, but there is a way to that, potentially. And, you know, and it's difficult to take on costs of this size and this scope when we're still trying to finish Nas, and we're trying to do flood control, and we're seeing costs in fluctuations and those kinds of things. But we, you know, I forget what the overall cost was of the first EAPC study. Was it like $100,000 that we spent to go through and look at remodeling or constructing a new one? Now we're here, we're looking at other alternatives. From my personal opinion, it'd be nice to have some clear direction, so we can move forward, instead of kind of bouncing back and forth all the time.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Blessam, but when we did that the last time, wasn't there a directive to come back with a 12 million and a $25 million option? That's sort of what we directed staff to do at the time.
Right. And I think, and I think this is step one to that.
Right.
Because we need to know what the design work costs, right? I mean, in any project we do, design is a decent portion of what we're doing. And so that's what we've got in front of us. So I think we're moving down the path that I had intended. You know, I think the monkey wrench that sort of got thrown in here is that, you know, number one, the legislature is doing some things that are going to impact us soon. And the police department itself is in a different place even than when we had this discussion. You know, now we've got an interim chief in place, we've got a direction we're going with, a new one coming. We've got some moving parts that have headed there. So, you know, to me, it's, this entire thing is not straightforward, because we've got, it'd be one thing to say, hey, you know what, as City Manager alluded to, we've got Nas still finishing up. As soon as Nas is done, the vast majority of those funds move directly over to flood, just to keep up with our obligations. Because as Representative Martinson said in the hearing in the House on this, that could become part of our way of meeting our flood obligations, is that we're going to need more of that sales tax, because we're not going to be able to use property tax to do it. That was his concern in that committee. And so we know that all that's coming. Meanwhile, we're not at the point yet, we're going to see what our budget process looks like this spring, but we're not in a position yet where we're actually looking at real operating differences. You know, we're still on the same trajectory upward. We were able to lower the property tax burden for everybody by using some reserves and giving the people back a little bit of what they overspent with taxes, but we haven't changed any operating numbers yet. And so we can't have everything. We can't have cream of the crop buildings everywhere we go. We can't have cream of the crop pay and benefits and low taxes. That doesn't add up. Those numbers don't work. And so, you know, for me, I would rather start to make some of the tougher decisions as we go, rather than maybe living in fantasy world where 25 to 75 million is even on the docket. Because I don't know if it is. You know, when Rob is talking about, hey, you know what, maybe there's something we could do here, let's get some HVAC work done, let's make sure the accessibility is right, get some carpet, get some paint, and make sure that it works, maybe we're good for a while. You know, you look at the other EAPC study, and it was fabulously done, but you're looking at multiple areas that are for future growth, as it's called. Future growth in government means future cost. So when we build into buildings the space for additional people, we eventually hire additional people, and we have additional cost. And when we build land, when we buy land, we build buildings on land, and we put people and equipment in buildings. Until we start thinking differently, we're on a trajectory that just flat out doesn't work. And so I would rather try to help us on that trajectory, to head in a different direction, but we still want beautiful buildings and expensive equipment and high pay everywhere we go. They don't add up.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion failed with dissents from Blessam, Fuller, Olson, and Samuelson.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll bring a motion that we revisit this topic in a May meeting. If city staff will bring back this item, either the first or the second meeting in May after the legislative session is complete.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just to make sure, the motion is to bring this back in a May meeting. When you bring this back, is there a direction that you want staff to do where you would want a budget amendment? Because I believe the finance department doesn't have money allocated to this for 2025. The project was in 2024, and that's lapsed. So is there a direction that you'd want a first reading in May on something, or is this just a discussion topic?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what we had tonight, because we would have had to have the same issue, right?
Yeah, there's, and Jenna can probably talk about it, but I don't believe there's any money in 2025 for this project.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's correct. We had $500,000 budgeted in 2024. That appropriation lapsed at the end of the year. However, I don't know if there was a formal amendment brought forward for EAPC, so we could do that all in one agenda item. It's just the timing of when you want that to happen.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue. So, you know, I think where we're sitting tonight, I intend to pick up this discussion right where we're at in May. And so I think what it would take is, it would take a couple options from there. We would need to revisit this based on what we've learned from the state, based on what the staff has come up with, and have that discussion, and then hopefully give direction. But that means going then to budget amendments. And do they need two readings? Budget amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, those are...
We'd be into that for three meetings.
Okay.
Now, with that in mind, though, the original item in May could come with an amendment, with a budget amendment, because the second reading could adjust it based on the discussion, correct? So if we thought it was going to be 40,000, but it ended up being 20, we can still amend that on the second reading.
That is correct. I just didn't know if you wanted to direct staff to do the full amount, just a few options or anything like that, but yes.
So I would, I'll amend my motion to bring the dollar amount we have here as the full amount, the 42,000, as the budget amendment attached to that item, so that we have it on the first reading, and we're ready to roll if we do.
Can we make that as a friendly amendment? Is second's okay with that? So without any objection, we won't have to vote on that amendment. So, okay, further discussion? My only concern is pushing it off to May, then doing the work. What does that do with our timeline to the budget? You know, does that put us, you know, if we're looking at a five to six week, and then if we have to act on it, then all of a sudden, trying to get something like that built into the budget, that's my only concern. And then all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're kind of where we're at again.
Johnson, tonight. Mr. Mayor, that would be, I think we'd be fine, because proposed budget has to go to the first council meeting in August. So we should be fine.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question on that, Jenna, and I don't know, you know, obviously we're not going to put you on the spot tonight, but how much of a stretch are you guys going to be looking at to, whether it's any of these, 12 million, 25, whatever that would be? I mean, are we getting, when I say this, take it for what it is. When I say creative, I'm saying we're going to be looking at funding mechanisms that are not just straightforward here. Because there's, in order to come up with that kind of money, so my point would be, we may be setting aside money for a couple of years, maybe starting and then continuing that funding. That's one approach. If we did it, say, kind of general fund-wise. Bonding's another approach. There's options, right? So it's not just, hey, let's put 25 million in the 2026 budget. It's what's our funding mechanism for a $25 million project.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, you're correct. I mean, it would, I would imagine, depending on what funding level we go for, it's going to be a multitude of different funding sources, and we're going to kind of have to put our heads together to figure it out.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 10 on the agenda, liaison reports. Let's start with Lisa.
Pull it up here. All right. On January 23rd, I attended the Central Dakota MPO Board Meeting. Over the last week, week and a half, I have judged several essays that were part of the National Civic Trust Competition. I think there were others in the room that were doing that as well. Attended two of the legislative updates with Shane Gettle. I participated in the Service Basin Loan Review Committee meeting on January 30th. I participated in a teams meeting with other elected officials from around the country who have or have been thinking about implementing childcare services in their community. And there were presentations from Charlotte, North Carolina, and Brookings, South Dakota. And there are different approaches to finding an answer to some of the childcare issues. I participated in the Service Basin Planning Council Executive Board meeting on the 11th. And coming up on the 26th will be the Service Basin Planning Council Full Board Meeting, and Central Dakota MPO Board will meet on the 27th, and Paul Pittner will be there in my absence.
Thank you. Mike?
For me, I've got, Commission on Aging will be this Friday, so I'll be at that. We've had legislative meetings weekly that we've been going on. And then just continuing down the path with Economic Development, meeting this week, we'll now be starting into developing actual bulleted items to bring back to council. So we're sort of entering that next phase that leads to kind of that May timeframe, hopefully to have recommendations to council.
Paul?
Economic Development Review Team meeting, again, ditto to what Mike said. Renaissance Zone meeting was canceled, been rescheduled for next week. And then last week, sat in on the meeting with my Association of Builders and city staff, and had some constructive conversations, so.
Good. Scott?
Ward County Planning and Zoning, we had a meeting last Thursday night. We have a meeting this Thursday night, and the following Thursday night, and we are over halfway through the new zoning ordinance, so hopefully we can get that finished up in March.
Rob?
What he said about the Ward County Planning Commission, that's just constant for us. It's been quite eye-opening. But other than that, we had a library board meeting last month. We're starting to talk about the budget at the library board, so we can get it ready for the city, for our budgeting process. Had the Ward County Emergency Management Committee meeting, pretty standard information there. I also attended for the last half of the builders' meeting last week, and then one of the legislative sessions last Friday as well, just talking about some of the stuff. So lots going on.
All right. If there's nothing else, we will move on to item 11, and that's adjournment. Is there a motion? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Good meeting.